Dr. Chase.
President.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
She's here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young. Ms. Young, can you hear us? We will continue to try.
Okay, well, you try to get her. Do we have a, it's not on here, but motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Dr. Chase, do we have a second?
Second.
Right, second by Mr. McCosker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to action item 2.01, adoption of the FY '20 budget. Do we need a presentation?
No, no, we're going to go first.
Do we, Dr. Chase, why don't you lead this discussion? If you didn't, I mean, you're the Chair of the Fab.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Sure.
Since this just got on the agenda just now, people, could you maybe go through the bullet points of what has changed? That would be helpful to me. Thank you.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask our CFO, Chris Fulmer, to do that, to just give us overview of what's been removed from the budget in order to get it to balance.
And that is removed from the budget that we approved?
Right.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. So, as Dr. Chase mentioned, I'll, I'm going to go through the summary, which is attachment number one on the agenda item, which ultimately is very close to what you would have seen at the School Board work session that we handed out last week. I did, based on feedback from that meeting, tried to break out some items in further detail and provide a little bit more detail on some various items and try to break them out. An example would be, as we were pulling together quickly last week, I just showed a lump sum decrease for the savings on our custodial contract, on how we had some retirees for custodians, and we shifted that to contracted custodial services. This time, I broke it out to show how much was savings in the FTE piece and how much was an actual increase in the custodial contract. So, leading up to last week's work session, we didn't, we knew what the total amount was, but on the summary page, just showed it in total. So, I broke that out in a little bit detail. So, I'm going to walk through, especially the changes from the School Board approved budget. So, our first item, we do have a 5% across-the-board increase included in this budget at a cost of $10.6 million. There is a 1% additional teacher scale enhancement of 13-plus in the approved budget that was eliminated for savings of $800,000. The Phase 1 implementation of the compensation study remains in there at $500,000. I put this in the background information, but do want to point this out, that what is in that budget is to move everybody that was identified, the positions identified by Evergreen halfway to the minimum. So, if they were below the minimum, we were getting them halfway to the minimum. Anybody above the minimum would not receive an increase without $500,000. We added 79.5 FTE positions at a cost of $4.8 million, and that's summarized on page two. And that was already in the budget. We did cut three positions, I'll jump to that in just a moment, from the School Board approved budget. We had, the stipend adjustments were eliminated with the exception of the robotic sponsor at the high schools, as we fully expect VHL Cell to adopt that next month. There is a nurse scale adjustment for nurses with a RN bachelor's degree and higher will move to what is equivalent to a teacher scale. The middle school assistant principals that are currently 10-month will become 12-month. We have some 11-month guidance admin assistance that we want to convert to 12-month, remains in the budget. Expanded tuition assistance of $30,000. There was a cut from the School Board approved budget to the School Board adopted budget of $80,000 for the teacher bus driver referral program that Dr. Kizner had briefed you guys on last week about pushing that off, fully developing that program and hoping to roll it out in next year's budget. We have some miscellaneous cuts for our non-personnel increases, which are summarized on the last page. So, right now, I'm going to just lower on this first page is what we show, our revenues. I should have started with that. So, ultimately, we have $15.7 million, almost $15.8 million in new revenue from last year's budget to this year's budget. So, we had to cut $2.7 million roughly, 2.5 in the revenue side, but we had some expenditures we had to add back in. So, ultimately, it was $2.7 million we had to cut in other expenditures. On the new positions, I won't go through each one of these, but I will touch on what was eliminated from the School Board approved budget to the School Board adopted budget, unless you guys instruct me to go ahead and go through these line by line. We did cut one counselor, so now we have 11 total counselors in this budget. We cut three of the other support positions, which include a computer technician to help manage VoIP. We're not, we had to cut VoIP from the budget, so until we feel like we can actually have the funds and availability to do VoIP, at that point, we will start to pursue the technician needed for VoIP. An O&M skilled maintenance position was cut, and then an admin assistant at Student Services Special Education was eliminated. On the last page, it shows the other reductions we made from the School Board approved budget to the School Board adopted budget, and in some instances, increases. This ultimately has not changed since our last meeting, with the exception of I did break out, at your request, the O&M reductions that we had and the instruction, LOD department reductions that we had. I want to point out that on the LOD side, there is no actual cuts to instructional materials and things like that. We're not cutting programs. This is, on the one line, that wasn't instructional material line, was actually, we had purchased some in this current year, we have some remaining, so we were able to cut a few thousand dollars that way. We'll, so, we still have to purchase more for next year, but we reduced the amount that was in the budget for next year because we still have some available in the current Any questions, or want me to jump onto anything in a little bit more detail?
Any questions for Mr. Fulmer?
I just have a quick question about the, I missed the work session the last time. The shared services contribution of $222,000? $222,000?
Yes, ma'am.
What does that entail, other than the person or people that we are helping to support?
We have, we're part of the radio system on the county side that we jumped on to, trying to remember if it was beginning of this year, or I think it was the beginning of the prior year, that we moved to their infrastructure. So, our, our infrastructure was aging, and we're actually going to lose the frequency that we're using. So, we had to find a new frequency for our bus radios and even security radios that we use across the county. So, beginning last year, we had to move all our radios to the county's frequency, and we jumped on their contract, and so they take the total costs and allocate a portion to us. So, we had in our superintendent's and the School Board approved budget, between that and the shared services, was $220,000 short of what the county was expecting us to transfer to them.
Had we not done anything with, with the radios upgraded, would that have had an impact on safety and security issues?
Absolutely, because we would not have had radios available. Our, the radios, they may have worked still this year, but they were being phased out, the frequency, by, I don't know who monitors those, federal something.
Did anybody from the county look into, maybe looking at the state for a grant to, to help cover that, that expenditure? That's a lot, that's an awful lot of money.
Yeah, so, and we're only a fraction of it. So, they, the county actually has, leases their own towers, leases their own infrastructure, and controls those radio frequencies.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. Any discussion on the board?
Can I add, because it is new, and I put it in the background information, but because it was a little late, I just want to point out that in the budget resolution, so usually it's pretty straight to the point, and we just talk about the total amounts that we were appropriating, I did add a couple whereas's where you guys are acknowledging that we are doing a 5% across-the-board salary increase, and an additional whereas to address the compensation study, and an additional whereas that the 5% will be added to the adjustments after that compensation study. So, a little bit of that, to make sure everyone is fully informed of how that will operate, and then also, kind of as feedback to the county to make sure that we are covered on our bases there.
Mr. Fulmer, can we add the date of that classification and compensation study, just to be absolutely clear as to which study we're talking about?
Absolutely.
Ms. Healy?
If I could just make a comment. Looking at the revenue section, which to me is kind of one of the most important sections, well, one of the sections here, just doing some quick math, of that 15.769, or 15.7 million, as my, I calculate it, and Mr. Fulmer, you're probably better at this than me, but I'm doing it back of the envelope, the county local transfer of that portion is about 39%, whereas the state aid is about 58%. I did do the division up here, and I just think that that's an interesting figure for everybody to, to recognize, that a good bit of that did come from the state. I think I'm about right. But I just, I just think that we have to also look at these budgets in the aggregate, as well of understanding where's our revenue coming from. And 58% of that came from the state.
Mr. Fulmer, another question I have, with respect to item number three, that the following special school funds be appropriated, are those the funds for the FY 2020 school year?
Yes, ma'am.
We specified that in one and two, but we don't in three. Can we go ahead and add that in three, just to make clear?
Absolutely.
That's what it's for.
Yeah, and I just had a question that, you know, hopefully, everything goes fine across the street, but if we adopt this, and then something changes between our adopting this and the county providing us with the amount that they said, what recourse would we have in that case? And I don't know if that's for you, or if that's for Dr. Kizner, or...
Chris, yeah, well, legally, you can't obligate funds that you don't have the revenue to offset. So, if that does occur, we will have another meeting, and you will have to make some difficult decisions.
Right. And this, this resolution is actually a request. It says the School Board requests these, so...
Right, I'm just, I'm just asking for clarification.
And I, I just want to clarify that we will, so, the County Board of Supervisors is still set to adopt and appropriate May 7th, I believe. So, with the timing, we, we want to wait, obviously, we wouldn't be ready anyways, but if for some reason they don't adopt early May and have to push that off, and don't appropriate the funds, we would have to, we would want to hold contracts back before we give them to staff. So, we're definitely going to want the county to settle on a budget, appropriate the funds, which gives us the authority to commit. So, we don't want to commit funds by issuing contracts until that's been finalized.
I think in the past, when time was tight, sometimes we didn't get state funds until close to June, we actually issued contracts and said they were contingent on the appropriation. So...
Yeah, that's, that's true. And even last year, we started that process before the state was finalized, but normally, we at least have the final number from the local government, because they still have to appropriate. So, at least when we have the appropriation from them, when we're committing the funds, we have a large chunk of the money, whether it's 40 or 45% committed on the county side. Obviously, we can put, you know, add language in the contracts, or pursue it that way.
Right, we don't want to miss opportunities with our current staff and potential future staff of, you know, not letting them know what the projected salaries are. I think we certainly have every expectation that this money is going to come forward. I think the supervisors are working with us on this, and they've made it very clear. We do this, they'll do that, and, you know, we'll be ready to go.
We are already preparing the contracts with the same thing that you're saying. We will get them out soon after next week.
That's okay. That, Madam Chair, so, I have a few comments as well. That's exactly what, I had not seen the 5%, you know, the scale, with, with all the things that you said, because the community is asking questions about, you know, so, hold on, is this my, my compensation study of a half million dollars, so I get a little bit bumped there? Then will it be 5% on top of that? So, so, that's very important, that to get the scales out, because that's when people actually see, well, the contract is where I actually see, but the scales is, is very important. So, I know you guys are working on that. So, I just want to make some comments. I mean, I think this is, you know, the Board of Supervisors, you know, they, they did a 2% or a 2 cent increase on the, on the, on the tax, which was a first for a long time for them. So, I really applaud them for that. It's, it wasn't, it's not easy to do that, even, even with folks really putting some very pointed data in front of them, passionate data. And so, there's some folks that I think we need to thank for that, and, and that's number one, is our, is our employees, led by the Stafford Education Association. Okay? Who, you know, you really have to bring the story to the elected officials in the county, or else the story is lost with, I don't like this one, I don't like the looks of this one. So, the employees really need to continue to do that, and then make sure you talk to your neighbors, and make sure your neighbors are doing that as well, not just to the School Board, but make sure that you're talking to the elected officials, not only in the Board of Supervisors, but in the delegates and, and the Senate, in the Senate. So, so, that, that's one thing. I'd like to thank Sarah Chase, and, and of course, you know, Dr. Kizner and the team that, and Chris Fulmer, of course, is a breath of fresh air over the years. I've been doing this for a couple of years now. Since you came on board, Chris, it's been a wonderful experience where, when I first got on the board, it was not a wonderful experience talking about budget and money. And it wasn't any fault of, I'm not, not pointing fingers, but it was, just wasn't, the policies just weren't developed like they are now. So, I really appreciate you and your team there, helping out with Sarah's support. So, you know, 5% is lost to the public. It's 5% was, was $10.6 million, $10.7 million in new money, you know, new money. And so, that, that was a wonderful win for the employees of the county and the children of the county, because that's, that's, that's who's at the tip of the spear. That's who's on the, that's who's on the receiving end of taking care of our employees. And then, as always, the, even, even though it's only 500,000 for the paraprofessionals and the, and the nurses was a big win. I know Ms. Healy and some of our other board members, fighting hard over the years for the nurses to get on the teacher contract, that's a big win. That's very, very happy about that. Paraprofessionals, bus drivers, and monitors are inching their way up, and we need to do better there, but we were able to give them a half a million dollars. So...
Administrative assistance.
Administrative assistance.
It's not the paras or bus drivers.
Sorry, administrative assistance.
It's the administrative assistance.
Sorry, administrative assistance. But we still have a lot, a lot of work to do with our bus drivers and our paras and our monitors with that, with that same compensation study, so. And we still got 27 teachers for growth, which is, that, that's, that was, that's really big. And 79.5 FTEs overall, but that's great that we kept, and I think that was Dr. Kizner kind of pressuring us to make sure that we really consider that, that growth, because that, that's going to come back. So, I'm, I'm very pleased with the budget, and I think it was pretty painless, at least for me this year, and everyone did a wonderful job.
Thank you. Ms. Egan, did you have a second?
I will be voting for this budget. I'm, I'm also pleased that the 5% is in here. It's been a long time coming, and you guys did a fantastic job. So, I do want to say that I am not giving up on the stipends for our teachers who do the 504s and the IEPs. We can give stipends to, you know, our teachers who see, see after basketball and gymnastics and all of the stuff. 504s and IEPs are just as important as sports. So, next year, I will be out there, fighting for you.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I will also be supporting the budget, and I do want to just thank the supervisors. I don't know if you all read the article in the paper today about the, the lost revenue for tax relief for veterans and widowed spouses and disabled veterans. And so, this, this was hard for them to come up with this money with these other pressures. And so, I, I really appreciate that they were able to do as much as they were this year. And, and I think it is important to realize that we add, we're expecting to add 400 students next year, which is pretty much adding half an elementary school, just to sort of put that in perspective, and that I'm very happy that we're going to have those growth positions because we are adding the equivalent of half an elementary school next year. That's all I've got to say.
Ms. Decatur?
So, I'm going to say two things I don't want to say. The first one is, we have a lot, a lot, a lot of work to do. And the second thing is, I really think, you know, in the coming years, we really need to develop a funding strategy that is predictable, efficient, and, and reliable. I know that raising taxes every year is not going to be sustainable, so with that, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors again for doing, you know, making the hard decisions. Thank you for doing that for us, for our teachers, for our staff. They really deserved the 5% for all. So, how amazing is that? I just really feel like this is our first step, you know? This is, this is just year one, if you will. So, I'm just really excited to see what the next few years bring, because again, we, we have a lot of things to do, and I know that we're going to, the relationships are blossoming. They're wonderful, thanks to the SEA for, for the working relationship, you know, with you guys, for showing up at all the Board of Supervisors meetings. I didn't even have to tell you, not that I ever did, I just always said it in years past. You know, I encouraged everybody to go on over there, and I didn't say it this year, but everybody was there. I saw you. So, thanks for showing up for our community. You guys are truly amazing. I'm, I'm really excited to support this budget, and, and today, I just want to be excited. But tomorrow, we, we still have a lot of work to do to make this an amazing place for all of our teachers and staff members, and continued amazing place for, for our kids.
Ms. Hazard?
Well, first, I'm, I'm pleased that the School Board budget includes a 5% across-the-board salary increase for all employees due to the relentless work of the SEA, teachers, parents. I believe that minds were changed to support this request. Critical financial support from the governor and our elected state representatives came in response to the public's voice, indicating that Virginia is now at a disadvantage in recruiting and retaining teachers due to the neglect, and I mean the word neglect, and lack of investment over the past 10 years. The fact that the public is finally getting involved in highlighting the lack of investment is really welcome, and I want to say thank you. For many of you, it's been a lonely road for several years and for board members to be making this claim, and I think this, this session has proved, we really do need people to show up, and we need people to care. However, I must balance those statements with the reality that this 5% increase was made possible really by the additional state funding. I don't see a commitment to get out ahead of what others are doing from Stafford County. Does Stafford want to just keep up with the Joneses, who are also getting state raises, or does Stafford want to be a leader and provide better services, development programs, and compensation than the other guys? And I mean that as our, not even our comparison district, just that way. I hope that the tide is changing in Stafford County to support a school system known for its innovative staff and programs, and not just to meet expectations, you all have heard me say that many times, and to commit to an investment plan for education in Stafford County. This budget attempts to keep up with the Joneses, as I would call it, but Stafford County Public Schools does not keep up because, in my opinion, of what we had to cut and what wasn't addressed in this budget. The work environment for our staff and students, our prompt delivery of services, student growth, and the increased need for support services, I do not believe are enhanced under this budget and may not even keep up with the quality of services we offer today. I want to start with our growth and our per pupil expenditures. This is something Dr. Kizner has been very helpful. I know I'm not going to, I didn't ask tonight, Mr. Fulmer, or from my board, to hear the math that I cannot get to work from the 5% across the board and maintaining for 417 students the per pupil expenditure for Stafford. We are very low. If Stafford were to aspire to Spotsylvania's per pupil expenditure, we are of somewhat comparable size. Using FY '18 data, the difference between Spotsylvania per pupil spending and Stafford's is $663. That may not sound like a lot, until you say that would allow us to have $19,245,133 more dollars. That's real, real money. So, maybe we shouldn't just compare ourselves to salary when we're looking at the Joneses. According to the Virginia Department of Education, Stafford's per pupil expenditure decreased between FY '17 and FY '18. It decreased from $10,533 to $10,244, excuse me. I want to look at that more before making a really broad statement about that. However, I think we have to have a partnership between our community, the board, the Board of Supervisors, on what is the appropriate per pupil spending for Stafford County, not maybe even how the state does it, what is important to us as a per pupil expenditure. I really want to make sure, and I pray that the arrow, remember, these are not figures for last year, when we did have a large bump, however, to see between years that they decrease is very distressing to me. I'm also gravely concerned that the proposed budget, budget does not address the ramifications of our board's votes over the year. I believe we have to address several critical areas, mostly related to growth and plans that, in my opinion, have been thrown out. First and foremost, the staffing required to meet the needs of our students is inadequate. I have to disagree that I think this budget is painful. It is painful to me. I know everybody says it was an easy, but I don't think it was easy, because we cut to get here. The number of growth positions, 28, seven at elementary, 15 at middle, four in high school, one Phoenix Center, and one ESL position. As stated at our redistricting meetings, the class sizes at elementary school were raised. I'm concerned about large class sizes at middle school, but I never thought that elementary school teachers would lose in order to move now to a new goal. Once a goal is met, we should not revert to large class sizes and space constraints from prior years to meet a new goal at another level. We need to meet a goal, stay with it, and continue to meet new goals. Prior boards felt that elementary school was the place to start and budgeted those positions. For me, that is, I am saddened that we may not be able to maintain what we had. In the same vein, I think we created additional CSR schools with large populations with our redistricting vote, and these schools will have eventual needs. My motion to commit the board to providing support to these schools was defeated and never came back. I heard for months my board say that the resources will follow our elementary school positions, students. I don't believe seven positions will address those needs. The reason they are important to me, that they are in this budget now, is I don't want to hire in November, December, when the need arises. We want to have those teachers now. We may be having to have CSR resources at possibly eight elementary schools, which is just less than half. The other board decision that has consequences not addressed in the budget is the early start to school. When the motion was made on this issue of the calendar, there was much discussion about the retrofitting of the buses with air conditioning. I believe there was a commitment to retrofit the special needs buses first, then move through the fleet. We are told, and I believe it was confirmed, that any new buses will have air conditioning. That's my understanding. I would just like to say that I really believe that, that I believe it's about $10,000. I would love to really have this budget cover those special needs buses for the summer. We, this board agreed to pay additional fees to summer contractors to accelerate their work. At least we can do is start this retrofit process for our bus drivers and students. On balance, this budget reflects a much-needed, much-deserved compensation increase to our staff, but the things that are abandoned in my concern with staff that will need to be hired later gives me much pause. I had voiced that I am very concerned about these positions for Moncur and for Conway especially, but for really all of our schools. I really would like this board to have met again and, and look deeper into the budget to see if we could rectify some of these consequences of our actions, because I believe this is a painful budget.
Madam Chair, I believe that Ms. Young is...
Ms. Young? Ms. Young?
Yes, I am here. How are you?
Can you see us?
Good afternoon. I had some hard time getting connected, and so, I heard fumble. I did hear Irene, Ms., I'm sorry, and Ms. Holly. So, did you want me, you called my name, so do you want me to just talk about... Did you want me, you called my name, so do you want me to just talk about why I'm...
It's your, it's your turn. It's your turn to speak about the budget. Any comments that you want to make?
Oh, I didn't have much. I wasn't want to take up too much time, but I'm 4% to 5% increase, of course, and I would have liked to have another 1% increase for those 13 years and up, but, you know, that's it. I also talked about last time at the FAB meeting that we need a strategic plan going forward, where that we can maintain what we're trying to do, you know, pre-resources, growth expenditures, all that was said by all you all before, and, you know, per student expenditures. But also need to be honest with ourself about, that we need to care about all students, not just for some. We don't care of specific areas, but we care about all students. That's what we need to show as a school board and we need to make sure that our constituents all know that we care about our students. Moncur, it doesn't matter where they are. I want to ensure that we are not hiding our problems behind, you know, moving students from one area to the other and about diversity, but make sure that we address the issue, which is ensuring all students, wherever they are, that the resources available to ensure that they have quality programs. So, I'm voting for the budget as is.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Well, I'm last and I'm going to look at the glass half-full here. There's two ways to look at it and I, I'm, I'm very happy that we have a budget that has a reasonable raise. This is the best raise that I can remember in a, in a long time. It's been a long time coming, so I, I want to, to thank our, our Finance and Budget Committee, Dr. Chase for your leadership, Ms. Young and Ms. Decatur. I know you've worked tirelessly over the past year and you are the ones that have made this easier for some of us because of your effort and work that you put in when you brought this to us. So, thank you very much. But I, I, I do have to agree with, with Ms. Hazard that there is a lot of challenges ahead of us. There's a lot of work, but we will start that tomorrow. I think today we need to celebrate and, and also to recognize the supervisors. I mean, this is the second year in a row that they have raised taxes and that's not, not popular. It's not easy, but I think they recognize the need and, and I, I do attribute that to our, our staff, our S E A, and, and, you know, the community members who went and really pled for this support for the schools. And I, I look at this as a good step in the right direction. I think we're on a, we're on, we're on track with the supervisors. You know, we're working together, we're sharing a lot of services, we have more communications, and we just need to keep moving forward on that, that line because that is only going to enhance the abilities of the schools to, to move forward. And we all know there's lots of challenges in retaining and attracting staff, teachers, as well as staff at all levels. It's tough. The better the economy gets, the harder it is for us to compete. So, I will be supporting this budget and I, I do want to thank everyone here for all your work on it. It's been, it's, it's...
Can I say?
It's been a while.
Can I say congratulations to Dr. Kizner for getting through his first budget with us?
We'll, we'll officially celebrate after they pass the appropriations, but I, I do think, I think it's coming. So, thank you to Dr. Kizner and, and of course, Mr. Fulmer. He's, he's on top of all this and I, I have to say, I have confidence in your numbers and you know I have not had that confidence in the past at all, at all times. It's, you've got a good team, Dr. Kizner and you've done a good job. Thank you. All right, well, that's, that's enough talking unless anybody has anything else to say. We'll call for the question. All in favor, the motion to approve the budget as stated, please say aye.
I move that we approve the budget for F Y 20.
We got too excited. Do you guys want to talk about it again?
All right, all that talk put after the motion and the second, all right, who seconded it?
I said second.
Sure, sure, give it, let Pam second it. I don't want to hear it.
All right, Ms. Young, we'll give you the second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries six to one. All right, that brings us to action item 2.02, approval of proposed revisions to Policy 2103 and Regulation 2103-R, student transfers for elementary schools. This is on the agenda so that we can get the policies out to the community and the families that do want to apply for transfers will be able to do so and our staff will be able to consider them and respond before our school year starts in a few months. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Ms. Egan?
Second.
Second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? No discussion? All right, do, Dr. Kizner, this will be posted tomorrow morning?
Yep.
All right, I want to thank Mrs. Cale and, and the staff at Dr. Kizner for making the changes we requested. And from, from my personal standpoint, the, the open schools, as I understand it, the three schools in the Rock Hill District, Garrisonville, Rock Hill, and Margaret Brent are all open schools for, for transfers. Okay. Yes. Well, there are, yes, but, but my, the schools in the Rock Hill District.
Can I also...
But actually, my, my students in Rock Hill go to five schools. So, there, I, I agree, but I just want to make sure. Yes, Ms. Young?
I just wanted to also thank, hello, I am speaking. I wanted to, I wanted to thank Ms. Cale for taking my emails at 4:00 in the morning. I appreciate that.
She is a sport. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
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 All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to our last item, which is a briefing on shared services in the C I P. This is on here just for a brief briefing because the supervisors have, have they invited us or they have tentatively invited us?
Okay, so...
A C I P meeting? And I just wanted, the, the board members, since we're invited to a meeting, for us to have a chance to refresh as to where we are on, on our C I P.
Yeah, so I, I... I've been disinvited to a lot of parties in my career, so I don't know if we've been really invited. We're hearing that it might just be staff on staff. So, we are, I, I called the county administrator today. So, if you're not invited, it's not, it's just not because of something that was agreed upon by the elected officials. It seemed like staff. But Chris, you got confirmation on that today, right? Yeah, so, this is too... I, I don't, I don't want to act like you guys weren't invited because you're always welcome to come, but I don't think you've been invited.
We have to, we have to publish though if we're planning on...
Yeah, we're going to get clarification to do on that, but regardless, you should still hear what we're going to talk about.
Okay, but Ms. Decatur has a comment first.
Oh, well, are you going to present something? I'll, I'll, I'll hold my questions. You might answer it, sorry.
And this is a brief briefing, right?
Yes, it is. It'll be, it'll be brief. I'm going to turn it over to Matt and, and let him go over the briefing. Just, long story short is they are having discussions on building the C I P going forward and we wanted to, they had a work session a couple of weeks ago and now we're meeting with staff in the coming weeks and then they're having a work session which they, as of right now, have invited staff to. So, we want to give you all the information we have, which is just really what was shared at their work session and bring you guys in the loop.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Haley, board members, and Dr. Kizner. Matt Townsend, Supervisor of Planning and G I S. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to, as Chris said, retouch base update on the capital improvement program now that it's, it's coming back into the surface here. I'll begin tonight's quick presentation reviewing the large capital project priority list that the board approved back in November, followed by reviewing some proposed assumptions that county staff has for the, the new, or the C I P process. And then I will end with the latest county staff proposed C I P. This is the large capital project priority list that the school board approved back in November of 2018. Just a quick brush-up on this, the top five priority, prioritized projects in priority order are, were high school six, elementary school 18, Ferry Farm renovation, additional capacity for early childhood special education, and the Hartwood Elementary School renovation. And just a quick reminder to the board, the, the proposal for this year's C I P was a balanced first five years with the year six through 10 being designated as planning years. The county staff proposed assumptions related to the C I P include the following. The 2020 proposed C I P is predominantly based on the F Y 19 adopted C I P and that was just because of a timing issue with getting the prioritized list over to the county. A new proposed potential county policy regarding the C I P specifically for new schools indicates that a new school, or proposes a new school to open when 100% utilization is reached across an aggregate school level with the capacity figure used in that calculation being design capacity. As part of this policy may include a standardization of construction and planning periods for new schools. Currently, that's being proposed as two years for planning and design, three-year construction period for elementary school, and four-year construction period for middle and high schools. A joint school and county staff land acquisition team is also planning to be developed with the purpose being to pool expertise and identify suitable sites to house new schools as they are needed. And the current proposal would be this group begins working on identifying potential suitable sites two years before the planning and design phase. Now, we'll review the most recent county staff proposed C I P as of March 26, 2019.
Hey, Matt, can you go back a slide?
Yes, sir.
Just on the, right there. So, the joint school and county staff land acquisition team, have, did you say you started that already or you started, they started?
Just, we had one initial brainstorming meeting with county staff.
All right.
We'll be bringing you the charter and everything once it's solidified.
Thanks, sorry, missed that.
The first project on the proposed timeline is Ferry Farm Elementary School renovation. We've all seen this before. This is being proposed to open in F Y 21 with a total project cost of $12.79 million. It includes the increased scope of the lower-level renovation. High school six is next. The current projections indicate the high school level to be over 100% utilized in F Y 24. And the scheduled opening date for high school six is slated for F Y 26 currently. The total project cost is $121,340,000 and this cost is carried over from the F Y 19 adopted C I P, which does not incorporate the results of the cost estimate that school staff had completed in conjunction with county, county staff members as well. Hartwood Elementary School, this project remains carried over from the F Y 19 as a rebuild over renovation. The scheduled opening date for this project would be F Y 31 with a total project cost of $55,096,000. Followed is elementary school 18. The current projections do not indicate elementary school, the elementary school level to be over 100% utilized within the C I P window. And although the county staff is proposing to use design capacity for this, no matter if you use the most recent program or design, that statement holds true.
Matt, real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
Both of those, the rebuild and elementary school number 18 are both slated for 950, correct?
966 would be the...
Well...
Sure. But exactly that prototype?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Matt, is there any thought that with regard to, and I'm not, I'm going to, I don't want to say pick on elementary 18, but even as we start to look at schools in general, I know that we're very focused on the 100% utilization rate. Is there any thought, and this is just something I'm posing to the board, that we may have other factors besides just utilization? At least in my district, I would say all of us, one of the biggest concerns that we hear is traffic, being able to get from point A to point B in Stafford County in a somewhat reasonable fashion. Is there any way that we can think broadly of saying something that I thought that became apparent when we did the elementary redistricting about moving kids back and forth across 95, Route 1, pick major arteries? Is there some way that we may also incorporate bus timing? I, I don't, I'm not sure I have the, the concept, but I'm wondering if there's a way to expand potentially. Yes, the 100% utilization is a big factor, but it may also be what kind of catchment areas we have to have for attendance zones that we aren't having our kids get there in a timely fashion. I'm just throwing that out, I'm not saying, but I'm trying to think little broader if, if we're always going to say capacity, that's got to be, I get it, a big piece, but can we also maybe expand it to other factors? It's just something I, something to think about.
Well, I was just curious, so, I, I just make sure I understand the language here. So, are we saying that we wouldn't begin until we're at 100, we wouldn't begin planning till we're at 100% utilization of design capacity? Or that we want to open when we are at 100%?
Open at 100%.
Okay.
It's the current proposal.
Yeah, and, well, is it the proposal or is it, I mean, I, I don't remember agreeing to 100% capacity at any point, but maybe that happened somewhere.
We didn't agree to it. These are the, this is what was set.
Okay, and, and I would just, I just want to say that I had a lovely visit yesterday to Stafford Middle School and Dr. Smith showed me around, but, you know, one of the things I saw in that middle school was at least four classrooms were being used for special ed. So, 100% design capacity, waiting until that point is going to be a real hardship to a school like Stafford Middle with a high number of special ed classrooms. So, just, just...
Yeah, and I just wanted to say one thing. This is staff recommendations. You guys, along with the Board of Supervisors, need, it, it may not be next week, you need to have a joint discussion and come to some agreement on what utilization you feel comfortable with and hopefully there'll be a consensus because, as you know, at one time it was looking at 90% and then it flipped to 100%.
Right.
And that seemed to be at the staff level and not at the school board level.
The 90% is in the comp plan. I feel like that should be our standard and then if we're going to deviate from there, that we need to change it in the comp plan because according to the comprehensive plan, I don't have the page, book, and number, it was 90%.
Yeah, so, that actually leads me to my question. I am sorry, I jumped ahead to make sure that you weren't going to answer it, but, and you weren't. So, all of this talk, so, that's what the, the Board of Supervisors decided they were going to use and, you know, and so that's that, but it, it brings kind of the overall question that I've been curious, and I've talked about this several times in questioning this whole process. Has the previously approved joint C I P process been amended? Has it changed? What's happening? Where, where's the joint?
To my knowledge, nothing has been...
The joint process. Not to your knowledge. So, okay, go on.
I just want to piggyback on that one because there...
I just want to piggyback on that one, because there were some discussions, not on the dais, but maybe in a work session or somewhere else where we were all together, maybe it was our retreat, that there was some suggestion that they would disband the, the joint...
Right.
Schools Working Committee.
And so that happened, this past...
It did happen? Did we vote on it? Or is it something that we...
The committee did not meet anymore. Okay, so, let me go through this again, because I've gone through it several times.
No meetings were scheduled, we'll say that.
So, the joint CIP committee was supposed to be formed of the finance and budget committees along with staff, and we sit down at meetings and discuss these things. So, I understand things happened, no meetings were, meetings were scheduled, meetings were canceled, and now we have this. And so, I would just really like to know at any, any later date, what is going on with the process, and what is the plan moving forward? I guess that would be my question to you. Thank you so much.
And, and it's a, oh, it's a, so, we have a two-on-twos. We need to get that two-on-two to become a seven-on-seven, and get this issue addressed, because there's just too many ins and outs. It's, it's hard to get clarification of what the process is currently.
Yeah.
And I just think the seven, the 14 elected officials need to sit around a table and get some resolution.
Okay, and that sounds great, but there is a process, it's just not being followed. That's why I ask, was it amended? Can you, I, I would really appreciate if staff, along with, you haven't been through the process, you, you know, it didn't occur...
Has it been, has it been here since I've been here?
Yeah, I know, I know. So, I think, I think it would be really helpful for you guys to sit down and look at what it was supposed to look like, and, I mean, as a team, you guys, does it, is that something that you would like to continue? I thought it was a great process. I thought it had the potential to work. I was on it the first year. The second year, things kind of fell apart, and I would love to, yes, have a meeting to figure out what we're going to do going forward.
Let me get with Mr. Foley and set some, some conditions in motion so we could get some resolution on this.
And if I might, this, we, we developed this joint, you know, this committee and this process, and, and I, I was supportive of it, and I brought it back to you guys all, and, and you all supported me in supporting that. It seems to have, as Jamie just said, has, has kind of either fallen to the wayside, or it's been that the intent is to not kind of follow that process anymore. And if that's the case, I would like this board to reconsider going back to the way that we used to do things, where we would do our own CIP and then submit it across the street again, because handing it over to staff and allowing staff to do our CIP for us is, it's our job, it's not theirs. So, I just wanted to throw that out there for consideration if, if our process has been deemed ineffective and not worthy of, of going through with it anymore. Thanks.
Okay, well, I'm glad we put this on, just even, even though we don't have a meeting to go to perhaps, but what it shows me is that we need to, to follow up on this. So, let's give ourselves until sometime after graduation, because usually between now and graduation, things are on a fast, fast track, and, and set up a work session during the summer, if that, if that works. But thank, thank you, Mr. Townsend, for, for giving us this update.
I have one more slide, just 3R projects.
And perhaps after that, after that staff meeting, if Dr. Kizner could send us, and, you know, a summary of what happened there, I think that would be of, of interest to the board after this discussion today. Thank you.
So, 3R list remains the same as approved in October, minus the projects that were shuffled for the Ferry Farm, to facilitate the Ferry Farm additional scope. And that's it, sorry.
Ms. Healy, I do have a question, don't run off.
Okay, yep.
I know. When we say the continued county contribution, is that going in the cash capital reserve account? Is it money that they're holding? Because we have a cash capital reserve, well, we did, since things have gone, can you just explain that to me? I'm sorry. I know I keep asking because I, I don't understand.
Yeah, so currently, we have that identified to come in annually to our capital projects fund to address the 3R projects. So, that 1.44 is, as far as can be committed annually, the, I think the intent is for it to be there annually. So, we've included it, historically, our 3R projects have all been unfunded unless we had bond funding for them, or we ended up with year-end funding. So, the 1.445 is actually a step in a good direction of dedicated funding towards some of these infrastructure projects, but the thought is that that's going to come into our capital projects fund and be appropriated there.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to rock the boat too hard, but I would say in future budgets...
Don't rock it at all right now.
Well, I would say then in our future budget resolution, I would love to see that number contained on part of our budget resolution. I want to make sure we get that money. Sorry.
Okay, that's for another year, right?
Well, I might, and I'll end on a positive note. Perhaps in the fall, maybe we could do, I know some jurisdictions meet with their board of supervisors, and the school board meet in like October, and start to say, hey, before the budget process, before we get spun up, are there things we can work together on? If it's, I mean, I really would love cost to compete to be on there, and I'm thinking with the legislative hat, but I also think some discussion broadly of, hey, we opened school this year, this is how many kids we have, and allows the board of supervisors to also say, and we've had these many incidents, we see a transportation project, or sheriff's law, whatever things that they have, and have that before we're in the midst of the budget process itself, just sort of a sit-down, get-together, and kind of say, here are some issues that we see. It's just a suggestion.
That, that's a good suggestion. You talked to Mr. Foley about that, Dr. Kizner, maybe like in October would be a good time. We'd have some information this year.
More often and earlier, I would recommend, but, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, we are now done. Thank you.
One hour, God. That's how I measure it.
Bye, Ms. Young.
Yes, thank you. Bye.